Good evening, Bridgeport. We've got a full house tonight. Thank you for coming out. It is 7:41. This is our August 20th meeting. Our meeting is in session. Could everybody rise and pledge a flag? Please. Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please.
Diane Gundrum.
Here.
Laura Halk.
Here.
Megan Nolan.
Here.
Amy Hi.
Here.
Kyle Shank. He's not here?
Kyle, let us know that he wouldn't be here today.
All right, sorry. Tooney Hiel.
Here.
And Saw Val's like...
I'm here.
Okay. That's everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Bill O'Leary.
Madam President, I just note for the record that we were in executive session from approximately 6:30 to approximately 7:40 with regard to real estate and personnel matters.
Thank you so much. Welcome, everybody. We're going to try something different today. I'm going to be presenting our agenda, so bear with me. First, I'd like to kind of start off by chatting about a couple of fun events that happened this week. You know, Bridgeport is special to all of us and, you know, it's something that... The community, something that we all feel, and we all feel strongly, and I think we feel amongst each other. But I think this week, we really were able to kind of show that to the world with our homecoming of Ariana Ramsey, our Olympian. You know, I just want to thank everybody for that great event, the turnout. I think we had four hours to plan it all and pull it together, and everybody really showed up and showed out. Thank you to our police, our fire department, to all of our staff, to all the businesses that came together. And I made a lot of very quick phone calls and everybody I called, I can say confidently, within a couple of minutes helped me, however I needed the help that day. So we're all over the news in a positive way. We got a lot of our businesses to get exposure as well. So the idea for, you know, this group of individuals that are up here is to really support our local community, to support our local businesses heavily with the support of everyone that we have here. And I think that was really a perfect moment for that. So I just wanted to start by thanking everyone. We have quite a long agenda today, so we will start off here with a presentation. As I understand it now, and I think all of us kind of had seen online, we had some horrible fires here in Bridgeport, something that's really saddened everyone, but again, kind of brought our community together in a really strong way. Again, thankful to have so many great neighbors in that space. So we have a presentation for McKay and Gerdon for their action during the fire. They played a really integral role in saving those families and individuals and residents. I believe there's a unit citation and, what was it, a commendation for Mr. Gerdon. So I'm sure the chief has a bit more to say about that. But thank you for being here. We're really happy to have you this evening.
Yes, Madam President, if we could, myself and the mayor will go up to the lectern there and then ask the officers to please meet us there.
So if you'll please step forward.
Good evening. This is a good night. It's a good night because we're here to honor those people amongst us on our police department that stood up when we needed them as a community. We have Officer Ryan Gerdon in the suit, and we congratulate him for the birth of his daughter on Saturday, Daisy, and his wife. Let him come here tonight, which is amazing in itself. He's here with his father, John. And then Officer John McKay is here with his wife, Caroline. So thank you. We have a unit citation for Officers Gerdon and McKay. For the performance of an outstanding accomplishment resulting from teamwork, on July 7, 2024, at approximately 3:00 a.m., you and Officer McKay responded to the 500 block of Grove Street, Bridgeport, for a large residential fire with entrapment. Upon your arrival, you found two additional residences heavily involved threatening two other homes and acted. You and Officer McKay worked as a team to evacuate and bring several subjects to safety during the critical initial phase of the emergency. Working hand in hand with firefighters, you gained entry into adjoining homes to evacuate residents. Officer McKay was able to bring an adult male to safety after he crawled out of one of the dwellings while you assisted with the rescues of the remaining trapped subjects on a rooftop. You coordinated with Officer McKay for the comfort of the fire victims during these hectic and intense moments. Without your actions, the outcome of the incident may have come to a more perilous conclusion. Your actions best exemplify excellence in policing and a teamwork concept, all of which are in the greatest traditions of the Bridgeport Borough Police Department. We honor your commitment and service to this community. The next one, next award is a combination of heroism awarded to Officer Ryan Gerdon. For an act of heroism and outstanding courage without regard to personal safety, which results in the saving of a life, on July 7, 2024, approximately 3:00 a.m., you arrived at the 500 block of Grove Street, Bridgeport, for a large residential fire. You assessed the scene with Officer McKay, finding four subjects trapped on higher floors and climbing the side of an involved structure. While hanging from a porch one-handed, you were able to reach two small children and bring them to safety. After this, you returned to the rooftop and stayed with two adults, giving them life-saving counsel and remaining in harm's way until the fire department arrived and a ladder in place to bring all back to safety. All of these actions were completed while fire rapidly grew and smoke billowed from the attached homes. If not for your actions, lives may have been lost. Your stalwart response to this critical incident displayed heroism and exemplify excellence in policing, all of which are in the greatest traditions of the Bridgeport Borough Police Department. We honor your commitment and service to this community.
John, do you want to get some pictures with your wife? Do you want to come up, Caroline?
Yeah.
And get a couple of pictures?
And your dad.
Yeah. Absolutely. That's great.
Look at me.
No, look at me.
Okay, now you can look at me.
John. Congratulations. Excellent job. Thanks.
A pleasure meeting you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your heroism. Congratulations. Although I know we have an exciting agenda, definitely don't feel pressured to stick around if you, unless you want to learn more about real estate in Bridgeport. But you're welcome to head home if you'd like to. Thank you for your service.
We're all extremely proud of, to have you in Bridgeport. Thank you so much.
Go ahead with your baby. Bye. Thanks. Congratulations.
All right. Next up, we have approval of July 16, 2024, meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
Oh, I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion from Ms. Hi, second from Ms. Nolan. Do we have any comments or questions from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have a, let's see. So I wanted to mention that we did have a presentation on the agenda for Bridgeport Business Association Good Citizens Award. That has been switched to a different date, so we will let you know and will likely be in the next meeting. Next up on the agenda, we have a, for council consideration, a resolution 2024-30, appointing a new civil service commissioner to fill the term expiring in December 31, 2025. I believe, council, for this, we would require for someone to make nomination and two second. Do we have any nominations for this position?
I'd like to nominate Oscar Gamble.
I wouldn't. I'll second.
Great. We have a motion from Mr. Hiel, second from Ms. Gundrum. All those in...
Ask for any other nominations.
Yes, I'm sorry. Are there any other nominations for this role, position? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right. Mr. Gamble, congratulations. Would you like to come up to the podium for us?
Mayor Jack's here. If you could be so kind as to administer the oath to Mr. Gamble, please. Thank you.
And we appreciate Mr. Gamble's years of knowledge and commitment to Bridgeport. He's been here many times, and you understand what we need here. So thank you so much.
Okay, it's on. Great. So you just repeat after me.
Okay.
I, Oscar Gamble.
I, Oscar Gamble.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All righty. Next up on the agenda for council. We certainly are excited that you're here, but if you would like to head home, you're also welcome to. Just wanted to let you know. All righty. For, next up on the agenda for council consideration, we have a sketch plan for 313 West Fourth Street. If you guys would like to come up to the podium and introduce yourselves.
Hi, good evening. My name's Deborah Scholsky with the firm of Riley Viper-Hall and Calle Greco, here on behalf of the applicant. Also wanted to introduce my team, and hopefully I don't take anyone's name in vain this evening. So I have Brandon Klein, our architect. Also have the landowners, Jay and Jordan Berkowitz. Have our civil engineer, Greg Knoll. Have our traffic consultant, Shelby Lynch, and Ben Brandon as well. So everybody's here, and we believe collectively we'll be able to answer any questions that you have. Let's take this off. So as you may recall, we were previously before you, probably a few months ago now, on a sketch plan. We've also been meeting very closely with your various staff and borough consultants to review various conditions of the plan. We took a hard look since our last meeting at some of the comments that we've received from you, the biggest of which, I believe, was the parking. So we worked that. We had our traffic consultant do a parking analysis. We revised the plan, and we'll walk through it in a moment, but we think it would be pleased to see that we now are showing all of the parking on site, so there won't be any parking that will be on street. The parking also will be fully compliant with the minimum parking requirements of the TOD zoning district. We are still intending to proceed as a rezoning under that district as part of this review. Your engineer has reviewed compliance of the plan with both the LIC district and the TOD district. And we believe that the, there's really nominal changes that would need to be made to the ordinance to proceed under the TOD. So we think that would be the most benign way to proceed because the plan essentially meets most of those standards. There's a few tweaks that were made in the draft amendment, basically to accommodate this property, but they're very relatively minor. So with that introduction, I'm going to turn it over to our architect, and he's going to kind of walk you through this sketch plan itself. And obviously, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Good evening. Very exciting meeting to be attended, and always great to come to different meetings and see celebrations of city staff. It's one of the exciting things you see when you go from different municipalities. The project's located right in the heart...
Excuse me. I'm sorry. Before you start, can you just introduce your name? Because I didn't hear it, so we can...
Yep, apologize. My name is Brandon Klein with Geis Companies. The project's located right in the heart of Bridgeport on Fourth Street and abuts the overhead rail. It's the current location for the Arnold Furniture Store and warehousing. The project would demolish the existing buildings that are on site and then rehabilitate and build a new development in its place. The project would consist of a six-story multifamily project with partial structured parking and surface parking as well. So you can see the site in context in relationship to the site. It's a unique site. It's very tight. It's a linear site that abuts the rail on the rear and Fourth Street in the front. If you'll go to the next slide. So the project has 200 parking spaces on site. 101 of those spaces are in the interior structured parking garage. 99 of them, so under half of them, would be at exterior surface lot to the left of the building, as you see on the plan right there. The building would consist of 164 multifamily units, ranging in various sizes between 1,100 square feet to 600 square feet. About 60, 58% of them would be studios and one bedrooms. Go to the next slide.
I'm still trying to work on the proper sizing for this slide. Come on.
So that's the second through fifth floor. There's a exterior roof deck that's on the rear facing of this building. Building's relatively designed like an E shape. Actually, this is the sixth floor. There's an additional rooftop terrace on the sixth floor as well with a small social community area off of that social lounge as well. But if you want to scroll up to one page before that, that's your typical floor plan with the units, again, like that E shape. If you go up one more, it'd be the second floor. So you can see all of our amenities, flank that large courtyard and elevated roof deck on the second floor with the apartment units lining the streetscape and area. If you want to scroll down a couple more slides. So when we design buildings and lay out buildings, we always kind of look at for architectural inspiration and the context of what we're going to design here. So what you can see is some mixed materials to break up the facade, break up the building, warm materials, a modern-looking structure, glass, and different types of penetrations and articulations to the building. Next slide is some of our mood and concept images to what we're trying to deliver. There's a rear dog park that will be on the site to the outside along the railroad tracks. Some of the streetscape and opportunities to activate for the pedestrian experience in the front. And just lighting this street a little bit in the evening hours because right now it's a pretty dark, dark area. Next slide. Here's some of the interior shots of some amenities proposed from mood inspiration, rooftop terrace, connection from the social lounge, social area to that roof deck and roof area. And then a heavy emphasis on amenities. These apartment buildings and multifamily buildings truly get leased from having those public space opportunities and interaction social zones within the building. Next slide. Some examples of what the interior finishes would look like in the building for the lobby, the ground floor amenity area, the fitness center, and then a unit rendering of the interior, of the kitchen area, living room, and then bathroom. Next slide. Here's some of the architectural renderings of the project in context with the neighborhood and the area. So you can see the six-story structure being built along the railway with the parking lot to the left. Next slide. Start to bring in some imagery on the other side looking with the rail adjacent to the building. Next slide. Kind of is in large view at more of a streetscape across the street. Next slide. Looking at the other corner of the building. Midpoint of the building. And then just the new streetscape that'll happen along the exterior. Currently, the building almost abuts the sidewalk, which then abuts the street with zero landscaping, zero street trees, and zero pedestrian interaction, which will change with these seating cluster pockets that occur periodically along the street. And then just some elevations. And then just some exhibits that are accompanying it. So happy to answer any questions on the project. We're really excited about the opportunity. We've really enjoyed interacting and meeting with the staff and the engineering team to derive a better solution.
I just want to say, from the first presentation to now, it seems like some really significant improvements. And I appreciate that you seem to clearly take our, taking our comments from before and taking them seriously. So thank you. I appreciate that. I don't really, I don't have a lot of tough questions, but one thing you said about the materials. Do you have, I know with a lot of modern buildings, there's new environmentally friendly materials or energy efficiencies or things like that. Is there anything you're working on through your buildings or engineering about kind of different kinds of materials? Because it looks so modern. Just curiosity about how it works.
Yeah, most materials in today's construction mythologies have a significant amount of recycled content or ability to comply with different various approvals and accreditations like FSC and other accredited aspects. In the building itself, we have a lot of green and sustainable aspects, energy-efficient HVAC units. All of our utilities will be metered and monitored. Usually, our appliance package is an Energy Star appliance package. We typically will have on an apartment building of this size four to eight car charging stations, which we typically put on the outside of the building due to the fire hazards that usually come with them being internally. And...
Would people have the opportunity to get more if they wanted to? Like, could you upgrade that later, I guess? Not...
Typically, we provide sleeves and the ground to be able to have pull boxes for future expansion. Yes.
And then, Roger, maybe you have the answer for this. Is this height okay for that area?
If the height conforms and is part of the modifications to the transit-oriented development, it would also conform to that, and that would be addressed in that zoning amendment.
I would just add that this particular application is a case study in what applicants do in conjunction with municipalities. Not just come in and say, "We want X number of parking spaces, even though we have Y number of units," but rather listen to the concerns of council, recognize that the borough does have these legitimate concerns, and find a way to accommodate our concerns while still building a beautiful project. So I would, I'd invite everybody to go back and look at how this was done because it was done well.
I have a handful of questions. So, and perhaps it might, I'm sorry. Mr. Klein, correct?
Yes.
Do you have the most recent review letter from Gannett Fleming?
Yes.
Roger, do you think it behooves us to go through your review letter?
Possibly, but I didn't bring a copy.
Okay.
We can share one.
Under the current, refresh my memory, please, Mr. Klein. Under the current zoning, what is the, that, what's the deficit that you'd be looking at in terms of a chasm between the parking you're proposing and the parking you would need?
Parking is required to be two spaces per unit.
So you'd need 328.
328, correct.
So you'd be looking at a delta of 128?
That's correct.
And the conversion to the TOD district, is that a one to one and a half ratio then thereafter?
Let me double check, but I believe it's a one per bedroom.
It's one to one? Okay.
No, one per, I think it's one per bedroom, which would be more than one to one. I don't think it's in here because it is compliant.
Ben, do you know?
Yeah, I believe that's correct. It's one, it's one per bedroom.
Yep. So in that case, we have 96 one bedrooms and 68 two bedrooms. It's one, one parking space for one bedrooms, one and a, one and one-half spaces, so 1.5 for two bedrooms.
So you'd be required to provide 198 spaces, and you're offering 200. Okay. One other question regarding parking. We're actually, we're in, we're in the process of ultimately rolling out and adopting a new revision to our zoning ordinance in the very near future. And in that, there is, there is a, a new caveat that's going to, a new provision that's going to be put into place new provision that's going to be put into place for future, future parking and a tiered, a tiered schedule as to if you build the parking spa, lot of X amount of spaces, you would need to require, you would need to install a baseline number of EV spaces correlative to the, the tiered schedule. Would, would you be willing to adhere to that, that schedule?
Believe so. What's the, what is the schedule?
We'll, we'll be happy to provide it to you in the very near future.
I'm assuming it's a smaller percentage of...
It's, it's certainly not, it's, it's certainly not prohibitive. I think it's probably going to be larger than the, the four to five that you had said that you would provide, but not 10% of your, not 10% of the lot.
Okay, yeah, I don't see...
Somewhere between four and 20.
Okay.
Okay, here's the one that I was waiting for that I didn't hear. At one of our meetings, there was a suggestion made on your behalf of your group that the parking lot at Bridgeport Memorial Park would be repaved as, as an amenity for Bridgeport, knowing that you guys would be increasing the number of people using the facilities there. And I'm wondering where we are on that conversation.
Yes, we put together a plan that looks to be about 30 parking spaces that would flank the existing access road to install 30 spaces at that, at that park.
Thank you.
I had a quick question. So I noticed a dog park. Are any of these amenities open to the public, or is it all just exclusive to the members of the residents? Which is fine either, I just want to know.
I don't think we've confirmed that at the moment, but I think it's something we can have a conversation as a group and give information back when we come to present for council.
Fantastic, yeah, and I think that looks fantastic. Thank you for your efforts and work. I know these, you know, processes tend to be tedious, but we really want to make sure that it's beneficial to our future residents and our current residents, however it may be. So any efforts from your end to, you know, help with that, then that, that's appreciated and noticed.
Mr., Mr. Phillips, do you think we could, you could touch on the, the, the high points of your, of your review letter from a couple of months back?
Sure. So if we're going to look at it based on the current zoning without the, without the zoning change, there'll be a couple of variances that'll be required. It'll be, it'll be building height, which is, I believe they're proposing 74 feet. Has that changed since the last plan that I reviewed?
No, 74 feet would be still the height.
With, which, your current zoning is 72 feet, so it's not a substantial change. There's a kind of a quirk in the existing zoning that apartments are only permitted in the conversion of a building, so the fact that they will be scraping the site and building a new facility will require a zoning variance. And then the, the previous parking that was, was discussed, that under the previous zoning, it'll be 328 spots instead of the 200 spots.
And was there something in there regarding the, do they, do they meet the requirements in terms of green space or public, public amenity space?
I believe they did because there was not much of a requirement in that, in that existing ordinance.
Mr. Truman, I think our original's plan did not have a number associated to that. Since we had those staff meetings and discussions, we've added that dog park to the rear of the ground floor, along with the streetscape seating and other areas. And then we've now since added two roof terraces. One obviously being the middle roof terrace on the second floor, but then also the, the upper roof terrace on the sixth floor. If you add all those areas up, we are compliant with the requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. What's the square footage on the dog park? You accepted between four and 20 EV spaces. I'll, I'll take between 35 and 4,000 square feet. Thank you.
This does remind me of the parking lot, and because you have that nice open space, do you have a plan in here for lighting and security cameras? I assume you do, but just keeping that in mind.
Yeah, absolutely. The project itself will have typically anytime we have, especially a structured parking garage, we put the blue light phones in those properties for safety and security measures. The whole property, obviously, will have security cameras, will be well-lit with street lighting, or I'm sorry, pole lights in the parking lot, wall packs at all doors and entries, and then path lighting to get back to the dog park and area with bollards.
I feel like the benefit of this ends up being that, that area, not that it's unsafe now, but it might end up making that whole area safer just in general with being well-lit and patrolled, so that's a positive.
I got a question about noise. You guys are aware of, there's a train track right there. Taking that into consideration, does that make you nervous at all? I mean, I live on Second Street, so like, I'm familiar with the noise, but you guys are right there. Is there going to be any kind of protective fencing for your residents? Because it, it really butts right up against the track. Like, what's your plan on keeping people safe and not taking, you know, advantage of walking around on the tracks, which is obviously illegal?
So the good news in this situation, our property line is actually pretty far away from the track itself. If you look at us, one of the site plans here, yeah, if you slide, I don't know, Mr. Truman, if you can move just to the right, just a tad on that plan, you can see the elevated rails, actually just to the right where it says "property area." Our property line is then about 25 to 30 feet to the left of that, and then we have a setback that's another probably 15 feet or so. So we'll easily be at least 35-plus feet away from any of the structure.
I mean, 15 feet is nice, but you can hear that train way across the world. So I just wanted to know if you guys had heard it for yourselves, you know, for your residents? Do you have like planning on putting like soundproofing glass or even like extra layers of insulation, just to kind of help with like the vibration? I mean, like, it shakes me on the toilet, I'm not going to lie. I live, I live right around Third Street, so I mean, just seeing how close you are, just not having, living here, you should know, like, it could happen.
No, completely understood. And my comment from the distance was more of just someone jumping onto the track. But from a noise perspective, yes, we've developed a handful of projects abutting railway, especially Norfolk Southern's railways, which have a lot more activity and disruption because of the weight of those capacity trains compared to a light rail situation here where it's more of a passenger train. But yes, we're used to that. We typically upgrade the window glazing to have a little bit more of an STC value. We also typically upgrade that wall with insulation, typically go into a mineral wool insulation instead of just a bad insulation to further address that situation. And usually those units end up being a little bit more discounted than other-facing units.
Smart.
Any other members of council with the questions for the applicant?
Is there going to be a dumpster somewhere?
So everything's internal, and what I mean by that, there's all those brown rooms that you see on the ground floor plan.
Yeah, I was looking at those. I was wondering if that was going to be the dumpster rooms.
One of them is usually a dumpster room. We keep it cool. We actually air-condition the dumpster room largely because it makes it almost a refrigerator, it cuts down smells, gets rid of rodents and other things that go in there. So you use mini splits in there, dedicated mini splits to keep it more to, I'll call it a 55-degree temperature. We find that that works. And then trash mornings, there are like two cubic yard dumpsters you can wheel out for pickup day, and then they get wheeled back in as soon as, by the building engineer team.
I was going to say, will you have your own private trash company, or will you attach to the borough? It would be like to mess around.
I believe, I believe private, but again, we haven't fully vetted through that system, yeah.
Cool. I like the idea of the, the cold trash. That's a great idea.
Do you have any other questions or comments? Does the public have any questions? All right. Well, thank you for coming out.
Thank you very much.
It's a great work.
I'm sorry.
We were hoping that, that council would authorize proceeding forward with submitting this to the county for the Act 247 review, subject to the solicitor's final review of the draft ordinance.
It's not on the agenda. Are we allowed to vote on things?
I don't know that we can do that tonight.
Okay.
In fact, I'd rather not. But we can keep it moving for you.
Okay.
It's not a sign of being negative, it's just the procedure.
Hi, just wanted to say one thing, two things now. Jordan Berkowitz, owner, my father is there. One, also, just as I was hearing the question on the train track, so I work there every day. That train goes through, not even every day, I mean, I know you live near it, so it's, it's very infrequent. And when it does, it's, you can hear it because, you're right, our building is like right up against it. It's very slow, it lasts for a minute, it has a noise, and it's done. And it's, it's the best possible train you could probably have, at least from my perspective.
But you said you work there, so you leave at 5:00? Yeah, when that thing comes paraling through at a million miles an hour at 3:00 in the morning, it does not go slow. So I'm just saying, there is different variations of the train. I was only asking, just like, if you're selling these apartments or these houses to people, you should tell them like, "Listen, there's a train, but don't worry, we got just a little extra protect, a little extra cushion, you're going to be good." I mean, I'm really just looking out for you guys, it's not, I'm not going to live there. So like, you know, I was just curious if that was something that you took into consideration as people who hear it frequently, I mean, middle of the night, all, all day, all, you know, all hours.
Yeah. I'll be honest, I've worked only till midnight there, but 3:00 in the morning, I'm out.
I will say, if I, as somebody who lives off of Fourth Street, I do, it is, and I don't, I can't sleep with the window open, and I don't live right next to the tracks. So I mean, it is something that, as a resident, I don't live right next to it, and it does bother me. So I mean, your residents won't be able to sleep with their windows open if they are affected by, if they don't wear earplugs, which they might have to, but it is something to take in consideration.
Yeah, and that's, if you're offering, you know, like saying like, "Hey, we acknowledge that we're on a train track, but that doesn't matter because we took these steps." Like, that's, that's what I wanted to know, because I mean, like, again, like, I don't, I'm not going to say that, you know, I know anything about anything other than knowing that, like, I, I've lived it for 15 years.
Good to get your perspective, obviously.
I, I do enjoy sleeping with the windows open, but that also means that, like, I know, like, depending on how, who's honking the horn, I'm like, "Oh, Bob's working tonight," or like, "Oh, Steve's honk." Because every train conductor has their own signature horn honk.
No, I know this for a fact. They actually told us that they, they'll do some specifically spitefully.
It might sound silly that, like, we're harping on the, on the train thing, but when they do barrel through at like 12:30 or 5:00 AM, it, it is loud, but, you know, if you take the precautions, you know, everything will be fine with future residents. Or you might be a weirdo like me who is just like, "Oh, the train, oh," and then you just fall back asleep.
Yeah, I mean, my house is practically paper mache, and I still, I love it. I live it every day. I'll do it tomorrow, you know?
It's good to know. I, I will say too, not that this is going to change any of that, but it is, the first floor is all concrete parking, so at least they are elevated a level over that, so. The main thing I wanted to come up here and say was, Brandon was being modest, he actually flew in early and went and walked the park. And, I mean, we're excited to do that project. We actually go and play kickball there every year, and it sucks. So we're, we're excited to do the paving project, and it's important to us. So I really just wanted to say that because it seems like we kind of glossed over it, but it's definitely something that we're doing, so happy to do for the community. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
It was nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
You'd have to come up to the microphone if you don't mind. State your name and your address, please.
Christina Mannan, 242 Hurst Street, Bridgeport.
Thank you.
Awesome. With the paving up at the park, which, which side and, like, do you have an idea of how many spots you're going to be doing?
30, and... There'll be 30 spaces, 15 on each side of the road, right, right at the entrance.
Playground side. On Union, on Union. So where we, where we thought. Awesome, that was it. Thank you.
Thanks for your questions. Thank you for coming out. I really appreciate you guys. Was there any other questions from council? All right.
Thanks for your feedback again, and we'll continue to work with your stamp and hopefully be back before you soon.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right. Next, for council consideration, we have Resolution 22431, amending the collective bargaining agreement between the Borough of Bridgeport and the Police Department of the Borough of Bridgeport. Do we have a motion?
Make the motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Ms. Houck, second from Ms. Dial. Do we have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. All right, we can move on to our finance section. For council consideration, Resolution 202432, executing an agreement between the Borough of Bridgeport and the Bridgeport Community Fund. As you all know, there's been quite a bit of collaboration and efforts, thank you for coming, between the Park Fund and the Borough of Bridgeport in efforts to improve the playground and the facilities. We all really have the best intentions to improve all of our amenities here in Bridgeport, and in an effort to do that, we, we have started to establish a bit more structure to our relationship so that we can preserve the rights of everyone and to make sure that we have some more standard rules around what we're allowed to do, what we can do, what we can't do, the rights of all parties involved, and to also standardize our relationship between nonprofits in general as to treat everyone equally. So with that, we had Mr. Bello very kindly drafted up, drafted up an agreement between the Borough and between the park to kind of standardize our operations with them moving forward, and they have thankfully signed that. We're very thankful to the collaboration that's kind of happened in the last period of time. I think everyone is in good faith and good efforts, moving forward positively. And now that it's signed, and that we will also be signing today, given the pleasure of council, if there's a majority vote, we can start to move forward towards some of our goals as to improving this amenity, making the park, applying to some grants and doing some things like that. I do want to kind of caution everyone, things don't happen overnight. This is local government, grants take time. We are going to push, this is a high priority for us as a borough, but we still need to stay in within our budget and honor that, and honor our rules and regulations as they are. So as you know, you know, every one of us here has fought for this, and we all want the best thing for the borough, so just give us just a bit of grace and time to transition to this next phase. But now we have the first document that I've at least seen to formalize a relationship between the Borough and the Park Fund. Positive things to say about both parties. This was a hard thing to do for both parties, but we did it. And, you know, as Bridgeport, the, as the community kind of goes through hard things and gets through them, I think we were able to do that for the positive outcome of the community. So that's all I have to say about that. If anyone has any other thoughts or comments, you're welcome to share them before we vote.
I just want to say thank you to Madam President, which I enjoy saying, and I also would like to say thank you to Mr. Bello and Mr. Truman and those who are involved in this. I think it was, like you said, very much in good faith with the direction to improve things for residents and children, and I think that the people who were involved in those direct negotiations because of the different kinds of experiences and backgrounds, that different, were able to do this collaboratively and positively. I think that if it was different people involved, maybe it wouldn't have been as successful. So I appreciate that. I think this is, from my 10 years here, a very welcome and positive sign that's going to bring more things to the park, and people should be happy about it. Like you said, you won't see the results tomorrow, won't see the results next week, but for those who want to see more improvements for parks here, this is a really good step.
I would also like to thank you both for taking all the time to get it to where it is today, because again, we're not, we're not trying to fix something that can be fixed tomorrow. We're looking for the future, and we're making sure that, we're putting things in place so that when we're not sitting in these seats, the people who take them after us follow the same guidelines that we did it right. And it's done, and now we're moving forward for a more positive Bridgeport for everyone, including, especially the children.
Thank you all. Now that, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion from Ms. Dial, second from Ms. Houck. Do we have any questions for comments, or comments from council or the public? You're welcome to come up. Please state your name and your address.
Christina Mannan, 242 Hurst Street. A couple of things. First off, we definitely 100% appreciate all of the efforts. I don't want to, I don't want to forget to say that. I know that this has been challenging, to say the least. So with regards to the agreement, like, are we going to be able to see that? Are you going to post that so we can see what you're agreeing, what you're agreeing to, what we're agreeing to in terms of the relationship with the fund?
I don't think we generally post our contracts, but you're welcome to ask me, and I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Was there anything in there that, like, you had to, like, give up or...
So I guess I can give you a quick rundown, right? So the fund does a fantastic job at what they do in terms of running events and making it a happy, safe space for people to be in. What the borough is really good at is we have a staff of excellent experts at things that are able to do the more functional operational piece of fixing and paying bills and things of that matter. So what I'd like to do is allow the Park Fund Board, not allow, sorry, but we're, we have both agreed upon is to, is for the Park Fund Board to be responsible for what a board typically is responsible for, strategy, vision, events, things that any nonprofit board is responsible for. You never really run across boards that are responsible for paying bills or doing a little bit more of the operational thing. So our staff has fantastically agreed to taking on the more mundane piece of, of things, like paying the electric bill and the water bill. And what it does also for the borough and the residents is, if something goes wrong down there, it's now we fix it. So the borough goes down and we make sure that it's taken care of, versus before where it was a bit more of like, "Can you do this? Can you do that?" Emails back and forth, it just made the process a bit longer. So now we are taking insurances on us. So, now, we are taking, insurance is on us, bills are on us, maintenance is on us, grass is on us. So, we do what a Parks and Rec department would typically do, in this case, where we take care of the operational piece in that regard, and they still do the great things that they do that we're excited for them to grow and improve upon. Also allows them more time to do things like raise funds for their events and things as such as a board would do. So, I would say that that is kind of my synopsis. No, I don't think either side really gave up or gave in. I think we are just learning how to work together to better, for the betterment of the community. So, there wasn't any of like, oh, they gave us and we gave them, and there wasn't any heavy, you know, nasty negotiations. Everyone was really positive. We all understood that in order to move forward in the future, we need some documentation that holds everybody accountable in front of the residents and for the residents, and I think that we've been able to do that, and they've been fantastic to work with in this last iteration, so have our staff and our, you know, our experts that you see here.
Okay, so I appreciate the accountability part. Now, moving forward long-term, is this a relationship that you want to continue? Are we, are you still thinking of having the community fund?
So, yeah.
Because realistically, it doesn't make sense for the community fund to exist in my, like, I know that they do these really great things, but they're not...
I just want to let you know, we are the Borough of Bridgeport, so as the Borough of Bridgeport, we operate with, as a local government. Any entity outside of us operates however they want, however they need. As Mr. Bello has reminded us, and we all know, they do not, there's no mandate for them to be a nonprofit. If they choose to be, that is their decision, and it's between them and the residents, frankly, in terms of a relationship. Our job is to make sure that your tax dollars are managed properly, and that's what we've been able to do with this document, is in this contract, is if they, that's really what our responsibility is to the borough. Whether or not they do what they need to do, how they need to do it, is really up to them, but what, what this does for the residents is it makes sure that the playground never goes to ruin again. Things like that are now taken care of because of this contract.
I would just add to that, that the reason the fund does exist and will continue to exist is because they own a significant piece of Memorial Park. It's their property.
That, no, that, that I understand. I just, thinking bigger picture, long-term, like, the park should belong to, I know, and that, that's not doable right now.
It's not our goal either. I think as a borough, our goal is never to take it over, but as the residents, I encourage everyone to pursue whatever they think they need to pursue and have the conversations they'd like to have. As the borough, our responsibility is to ourselves as the borough and the residents, and then beyond that, any entity that's private, we just deal with equally and with as much transparency as we can. They are a nonprofit. I'd like any nonprofit in the world to be able to approach us similarly to the way that they do and go through the same exact process, and that wasn't happening in the past, and I think that's what we've been able to do now. And, yeah, go ahead.
And I would say that the park board, I mean, the community fund is always going to exist, and the members of the park board, they're volunteers. They are giving a great service for the community, you know, they are giving their own time, sometimes their own money, to ensure that there are Parks and Rec programs up there, that there are the Little League ball fields, you know, obviously, we all know that the playground, you know, they're expensive. That is eventually going to be fixed, but, you know, we, we, I don't even know the amount of money that we would have to pay to get the work that those volunteers are tirelessly giving to the borough. So, I know that it's, it's, it seems like, you know, a crazy amount of just stuff and back and forth with, like, who owns this land and who owns that, but, you know, we're doing our best to ensure that we have a good relationship moving forward with the community fund and the park board volunteers.
And then, are we sure and clarified on their nonprofit status? Like, are they actually a nonprofit still?
Yes, however, we can't speak on their behalf here at this meeting, so that's the only...
Yeah, no, that, it's a little disappointing that they aren't present, just because I've looked, and we've looked to try and find information on the community fund, and there is nothing. So, I'm trying, I'm confused as to how you're going to hold them accountable when there's no information available for them. When do they meet? Who's on their board? All of these specifics that we have no access to, but we're supposed to be confident that they're going to agree to...
Well, I think you will have access to that information if you don't already. We have a representative from our board who sits on that board.
I am the park board liaison for council. They may not have, like, regularly scheduled meetings like, you know, we have here on Borough Council, but they, you know, they do meet. When they meet, I certainly join them, and when they meet, they're talking about financials of, oh, you know, we have to fix, you know, this electrical box at the, at the park, or the, you know, we've had a plumbing issue, or planning their spring and fall parks programs. I can, I can tell you that they are just, they're just, you know, they're doing their best with what they have to provide amenities for the borough, but you can certainly ask me any questions if you have.
There. Well, one follow-up was, like, I did go to the school board meeting, and I did, the last meeting I was at, you had mentioned that, you know, the district, in your opinion, has fallen short.
Yeah.
So, I did bring that up at the school board, and so I was wondering if there was any conversations between the school board and, and that fund, because I know previously they had offered funds, but that was, there was nothing ever, like, that came to fruition about that.
Yeah, I don't know about funds being offered. They have offered certain improvements that they selected, and what comes to mind is a baseball backstop. I don't believe, and I can't say definitively, because I don't, I'm not on the fund, I'm not a member of that board, but I don't think funds were ever offered, and in fact, I still believe that the school can't exist without the amenities provided by the fund, and I remember when the school was permitted, that was a huge issue. And if I'm right, and I may be, I've been wrong five times today already, so maybe I'm wrong again, but I don't think so. I don't think any dollars have been paid by the school board to, to the fund or to the borough for improvement of that park since the inception of the school, and the parking lot, which is used virtually every day. I don't think a penny has been paid by the school district towards that. Now, that's not to suggest that they know that they should be doing it and they're just doing it, trying to get away with something. I'm guessing that nobody really knows what the obligations are, but it seems to me, if you're actively using something, we should be discussing about, we should be discussing a contribution from the school district to the fund, if not the borough, for the parking lot, or both.
So, you say we should be having a discussion. So, who should be starting that conversation?
That conversation has begun, as I understand it. I personally have not been part of that at this point.
Okay. Is that something that is in your realm, or no?
The board, I believe, has, has reached out, various members of the board, if not staff, have reached out to, to the school district, and there's some commonality of membership and some, some relationships there, and I understand they're fully aware of our concerns as expressed by me. I don't think, I think the reaction was positive, that, hey, no one's doing this intentionally, we just don't really know what our obligations are. So, frankly, I was buoyed to hear that. In my preference, it would go a lot faster than it's going, but at least people are acknowledging the issue exists, and everybody is, you know, circling back to look at documentation. I don't know when the school was built, but it's a while ago.
Yeah, and I think that having this agreement in place gives us the, the advantage to be able to have those conversations. So, before today, we had conversations, but now we'll have a different position to do that, and also, a lot of the people who are involved in those school board discussions were not around at any time when these things were happening, so, and they're going to be coming to us, not soon, but just in general, with the greater attendance at the school, greater needs at the school, they're going to be coming to us with the questions. They have done that in the past, and that gives us strength to say, hey, if you want X for the school, whether it's more security or anything else, then we need something in return. So, that's just how those negotiations work, but I think that this is going to help us with that in the future.
Okay. And then, sorry, I've got a lot of things going on in my head. In terms of moving forward in these improvements and who's making those choices, like, who is, who is discussing that, planning it? I know that the borough, you said you're taking care of all of their bills, but at the end of the day, who has the final say in terms of, like, who's going to do the fields, who's going to do the park?
This continues to be a relationship. One of the clauses in the contract is that it needs to be maintained, though. So, we've, we've added, we've both agreed that this needs to move forward positively. We're, we're both going to be negatively impacted as groups, you know, by it not, and everyone's intentions is to improve and to do the best that we can. I think that this at least is a really great first step in that direction. I think the park is, that's the major thing that's, that's there, and I think both parties are acknowledging that this is something that needs to happen quickly, so that's, the goal is there. I don't know that any one of us has the final say. It needs to continue to be a relationship moving forward, but the contract makes that a lot cleaner, a lot easier. There's penalties to not doing certain things now where there wasn't in the past. There was no way to hold anyone accountable in the past. Now there is.
And with the contract, does that mean, like, if you were to acquire grant funds, that you would be able to use them now?
I think the way it is, is if something goes awry and it's not fixed, then the contract is null and void. So, if, if either party just says, oh, we're not fixing this, and it's a problem, then the contract goes away and the funding goes away, and there's that consequence.
To answer your question, Ms...
And no one wins on forward, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. To answer your question, Ms. Mannan, yes, the, one of the impetus behind executing this agreement is to have a reciprocal agreement between the two agencies in order to approach funding agencies moving forward for grants.
Okay, thank you.
That's the first thing on the agenda, is a grant for that, that park, for that playground.
All right. Lastly, like, do you have anything in place if, say, this agreement that you have does not go the way you would like it?
Can define in place?
Well, you, you have the contract, so, say, for whatever reason, it's not moving in the direction that you would like, like, what is the backup?
The overall backup is that if the borough was that dissatisfied, they could withhold funding, insurance, grass cutting, and a number of other things, so, so basically...
You're willing to hold off on paying their bills to make sure that they do...
It's in a contract. No, it's not about willing, it's done.
Yeah, and we don't expect that to happen. We expect this to be, while it was arduous at times, everybody's on the same page, and no one wants the park to suffer. So, that's, that's the one easy part of the transaction. The, the playground, just 30 seconds or less, was funded by an acquisition that yielded about $380,000 when it was first made. That's not the kind of funding that the borough or the fund traditionally had without something happening, right? So, everybody realizes that we have to go out for grants for something that size. Now, things have changed a little bit in the borough, but we still can't write $380,000 checks every other day. So, the funding is available for Park and Rec. Everybody wants it to be available and wants to get it and spend it appropriately within that playground, so I don't think that's going to be an issue. I'm going to be stunned if that's a problem.
Yeah, and I would just add that, while you said it was arduous at times, I've been here for many years, and it was definitely not the worst negotiation or issue that we've dealt with here. So, we've had many more contentious issues that we've resolved peacefully, so I think that everyone, especially with how things came along in the end, we've dealt with far worse, and I think that that's a good sign for how this came together.
That's a really great question, and I think the answer is that we have a contract. We're all prepared to abide by the contract, and yes, if, if all said and done happens, the worst-case scenario, that unfortunately is what's in the contract, and we both signed it, so we're going to sign it. So, thank you for the questions. I appreciate you representing the residents and...
Last, last one.
Go ahead.
In the spirit of transparency, where would we look to find what we are spending and giving to the fund?
So, we have our financials that are presented in November, second meeting or first meeting in November every year. They're on the website. You're welcome to grab them, but if you reach out to us, I'm sure we're, everyone will be more than happy to provide you whatever you need.
Okay, wonderful.
It'll be fully, I would say that, it'll be fully, it will be more fully fleshed out in the 2025 budget as we, as we cement this agreement in place this fall and create a skeleton budget for what those operational and other upgrade costs are going to, capital costs are going to be for the park next year, so...
We post our agendas, so you're welcome to kind of keep track and then come to those meetings to ask those questions, too.
As a final positive note, historically, it's been a fixed figure that the borough provided to the fund. The borough is not married to any figure. It's going to be a question of need. So, to the extent that something needs to happen, it would come before the borough, and the borough would make a decision whether to fund it or not, even if it exceeded some fixed figure.
Are there any questions from council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Bridgeport, you got your park back. All right, next up on the agenda for council consideration, Resolution 202434, executing an agreement between the Borough of Bridgeport and...
33, the Tax, Tax Collection Committee.
Oh, that one, so, that, okay. So, 20, Resolution 202433, appointing the borough delegates to Montgomery County Tax Collection Committee.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Just briefly, I appreciate the zeal in, in adopting this, this page-turner of a resolution. Just for, just for clarification, tax, the Mount Co Tax Collection Committee is a, a, county agency-born committee, composed of one delegate from each township and borough in the, in the county of Montgomery. They make decisions such as administering over the Tax Claim Bureau, deciding who the county-approved tax collectors are, third-party tax collectors are, things of that nature. Historically, the borough manager is the delegate, and the council president is named the, the alternate delegate. That's the way it was this previous iteration. I believe we refresh this every two years. It's a two-year term, and that would be the, the structure that is being proposed in, in this current resolution as well.
So, we had a motion from Ms. Houck. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms., oh, sorry. Second from Ms. Hi. Any questions or council, any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up for council consideration, Resolution 202434, executing an agreement between the Borough of Bridgeport and Norfolk Southern Railway Company for preliminary engineering services, railing, relating to rail crossings for improvements. I don't know if, Mr. Truman, you wanted to chat a little bit?
Sure. So, as a result of the River Point development and the large number of residents that we are anticipating when everything is said and done over there, there was a review performed by PennDOT, representatives of the state's liaison to the FRA, Federal Railway, Norfolk Southern. We performed a site walkthrough, and along with the developer and, and representatives of, from the municipality, from the borough, we performed a site walkthrough of, of the three aforementioned crossings at Mill, Depot, and Ford last fall. It was determined that in order to be safety compliant, given the number of increase in population on the other side of the train tracks, that there are a number of safety improvements that need to be performed at the three aforementioned crossings. So, the borough, while the developer is going to be paying for the, the overall project cost here for any upgrades and improvements that need to be done, Norfolk Southern doesn't enter into agreements with individual developers. They will only do business with municipalities, as it were. So, we are, we, Bridgeport Borough, are entering into this agreement for engineering services, and ultimately, ultimately, that's going to culminate in some construction costs to perform these improvements. However, this is actually not being funded by taxpayer dollars, it is being funded by the property developer, so that is the, the reasoning behind this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Truman. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion from Ms. Dial, second from Ms. Nolan. Do you have any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up for council considerations, authorization to donate a refrigerator... authoriz, authorization to donate a refrigerator to the Bridgeport Fire Company, number one.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion from Ms. Howke, second from Ms. Kundra. Any questions or comments from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
Plenty of room in that freezer, guys, for some mouse cream.
Shameless plug. For council consideration, authorizing the bills and salaries, August 2024.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Motion from Ms. Hi, second from Ms. Nolan. Any comments or questions from council or the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. That wraps it up for our business portion. We can move on to unfinished business. Are there any items of unfinished business today? Seeing there are none, we can move on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports?
We had a finance committee meeting last night, and I would just say that it was a very positive meeting in that we have some large projects to do in the next year, whether it's sewer-related or buying properties. And thankfully, through the stewardship of our staff and solicitor and others, we will have the funds to do them. So we're, I'm not saying we should just start, like you said, spending $300,000 every other day, but it's good to know that we have some major repairs that would years ago cause us to refinance our budget, but this means that we're able to be in a good financially sound position. So we will have some major things in the budget coming up, but we're in good shape.
Thank you, Ms. Ohio. Do we have any other committee reports? I'd like to share that the Halloween committee has been chugging along very excited. We've had a lot of great meetings so far. Halloween is fast approaching, so if you have any interest at all, you don't have to have had, come to any of our meetings to join us now. Just shoot me an email, and I'm happy to update you on where we're at. But keep a lookout for our Facebook, for the Bridgeport Borough's Facebook, for some updates. There will be a lot of events coming up, so I just want to make sure everybody keeps track of it. We will do our best to get the, the word out there, but as I said, it's fast approaching, so we can all get very excited for some really fun, some things to come. All right, that's it for committee reports. We can move on to the mayor report. Roger, yes, you're...
Thank you. Just got a few things this evening. At the end of July, I hosted a CPR certification course with training by Plymouth Ambulance right across the bridge. It was really an informative and hands-on experience that I recommend to everybody, so I appreciate those who attended. At the beginning of August, I worked with Oak Street Health over in Norristown to provide residents with two intro-to-Medicare sessions. Thank you to those who attended. I hope you learned how to jump-start your Medicare healthcare journey. It's quite a doozy. Thank you to the Bridgeport Police Department for the best Bridgeport night-out event yet. We had tons of organizations sharing information. We had tons of games for really all ages, music, free food, and a lot more. It was really due to the hard work of our police officers, who try their best to make Bridgeport an even better and safer community for us to live in. So thank you. My monthly office hours will be taking place on this Thursday, August 22, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. in my office, which is on the first floor of Borough Hall. Finally, because our start-of-summer community game night was such a blast, we're going to do it again. So mark your calendars for Friday, September 13, at 6:30 p.m. in Borough Hall to celebrate back-to-school with the whole community. The Norristown Library will be showing up with a full selection of games for all ages, and Family Services of Montgomery County will be providing free pizza for dinner. So don't miss out on the fun. Just please RSVP by either leaving a message on my mayor phone voicemail, or by responding to the Facebook event, so you know how much pizza to get in advance. That will be very helpful. But I hope to see you there, and that is all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, the night out was even better than the last few times. Like, we were coming from a soccer practice, and my kids just wanted to go home, so I thought we'd just stop in for a few minutes, and then it was hard to get them to leave, especially oddly enough, talking to the coroner's office, which was way cooler than I expected. And she asked why I don't stop by more often, and I said, I try to avoid this place, but she said I shouldn't. So good job to the police officers and everyone involved. Thank you for all your hard work on it.
Yeah, I wanted to also make a comment. I mean, I've been to mostly all of them since I've moved here, and it was definitely the best year. I don't know if it was just the weather, or whatever you guys did, it just made it so much more fun experience for kids all ages. I mean, even my 20-year-old was having a good time. So thank you guys so much for a great night.
All right, with that on to Chief's report.
Good evening, Bridgeport. So National Night Out, Sergeant Murphy and crew did a wonderful job with the, the planning and the execution of the event. It was wonderful. I thanked everybody there. So again, especially for those people that donated their time, Janeway towing, there was like 10 or 12 bicycles and backpacks and other things that were given away. Just where people look forward to that and fills needs. So any of the people that came out from all of the counties, county, local county and state organizations, that people got some positive feedback from, was wonderful. So, so wonderful thing. So we, we look forward to an even better one next year. We just joined McLaughlin, which is Mid-Atlantic Great Lakes Organized Crime Network. You'd say organized crime network. It's just a resource for us for a very small fee. So when we have to prepare things for, it could be things for court, it could be flow charts or charting financial things, could be pole cameras, all kinds of different things. Great organization. It costs us next to nothing, and, and they'll be there for us. So wonderful partnership with them. We just completed an aggressive driving grant. We only got eight hours this last time, but we issued a bunch of tickets and warnings throughout Bridgeport. Also, we conducted some directed patrols and enforcement on Borough Line Road over the last month, and the red and blue lights were on for people that were leaving, exiting or entering without stopping from private driveways or properties, stop signs, all kinds of violations. So my hats off to the officers for doing that daily. Our youth aid panels meeting again on the 22nd. It's a great organization. We just got it restarted for two years or three years. It was kind of dormant. So that's doing, that's doing well. I want to thank everyone, both in Bridgeport, both the, the government, the council, the professional staff, for, for the flowers and stuff. For, my father passed away three weeks ago. He was raised in Bridgeport on West Fourth Street and on West Fifth Street, went to Bishop Kenrick. He graduated in '58 from there, and before that, he was in St. Augustine School. So many thanks for everybody for all of the condolences that my family has received. It's very, very, very heartwarming. We are investigating some crimes on Ford Street at 1:00 a.m. on Sunday. If you happen to have seen anything or review your video cameras at 1:00 a.m. in and around the, between the four and the 800 block of Ford Street, please contact Detective Bill Murphy, as well as around Dino's Restaurant on, that would have been on overnight Thursday into Friday, probably around the same time, right there in East Fourth and Holstein areas. If you happen to see anything there, talk to your friends and neighbors, and please let us know. And that's all I have for you this evening. Oh, one thing, wasn't it National Soft Ice Cream Day?
It was, yes.
I'm sorry for not posting something or selfie, but I was thinking of you. Another gratuitous thing. National's happy, belated National Soft Ice Cream Day.
Hey, that sounds like I'm fast.
Did you actually know that today's National Mosquito Day, for whatever reason?
That's horrifying.
I'd like to thank my homeowner's insurance company for sending me a monthly list of all the national days, and that's the only reason why I know that.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for all you did this week. We really appreciate your, your staff and team for showing up for us. So thanks for what you do.
Chief, I just want to say again personally, sorry for your father, and I remember how proud he was when we swore you in as chief. So I know he was proud of your whole career and life, and especially probably the proudest thing he was, probably how you are as a father. So I just extend that personally. On another note, school starts next week. Thankfully, there will be children leaving homes to go away for hours on end. And they will be taking the bus. Do you guys, you have everything ready for what you need for the buses and the crossing guards? Everything's got up for that?
We do. Vice President Ohio, so tomorrow at 9:00 a.m., I'll be hosting the Bridgeport Crossing Guards at the Police Department, doing our yearly refresher training. We had just gotten additional uniform items out to everybody else. So I go over the rules of the road, their actions, expectations, equipment, to deal with the motoring public. So yes. Also, I'll be ordering, as you knew, last year, we extended, we had another couple crossing guard spots to cover Union Avenue, which is a wider road that lends itself to speed, and we'll be purchasing a few extra pylons just to make sure. So they get scuffed. Unfortunately, they get run over way too often, but we'll, we'll be building that out. Also, you might have seen on Schuylkill Parkway, and we'll have more electronic signs already saying that school's opening soon. And as we go through those iterations, we'll be doing some traffic enforcement in the area, and our officers placed off of Ford Street. I think that the Ford Street corridor is probably the most police-connected in any school district here around, so we spend a lot of time. So we will spend more time to condition our, our parents and motoring public around our, the safety of our children.
Great. If there's any posts you can do on social media, either later this week or even Monday when school starts, just letting people know to be prepared for those early hours of 7:30 for buses and then 3:30-ish, that'd be good.
Will do.
Thank you, Chief. We can move on to new business. Are there any items of new business to discuss? Seeing none, we can move on to open forum announcements. Are there any announcements for open forum? All right. Train coming through. Do we have any, does anyone in the public have anything to, does anyone in the public like to comment? Anyone pull a comment? All right, we can definitely entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, it is 9:03. Thank you for coming out. We are adjourned.